That we are documenting, that we are on board with all this. These are our guidelines and our principles as to how we're going to act as a committee or the council. And moving forward, this is our guidelines or guideposts on what, how we act in public and how we act with the public.
And with each other. And with each other.
Okay.
Okay.
If you have any questions, should we bring those up now? Or, well, is this, it's a done deal document?
It's a done deal.
Right, right. If you have any questions, you, if you have any questions, you're welcome to pose them directly to me, and if I can't address them, then I will connect you with someone who can.
Okay, that's fine.
And if you choose not to sign any behind, thank you Chairman Bobowski, I will be following up with you probably by this time next week, asking where the heck it is.
Okay.
If you have time to do it, if you have time to do it tonight, that would be lovely.
Is it safe to say if you don't sign here, or not on the committee?
I have not been told that, but I think that's probably not far off the mark. I think that's a requirement of serving.
So we have a choice. I just thought we'd cut to the chase. Recruiting ideas for two vacancies on the EDC, huh?
Yes. So, Merrillson, early last week, brought down a listing of who had filled out a volunteer form over the last three years. And I have worked at the clerk's office to get the proper, maybe two have not responded to me. So we do have a couple of candidates, people who are still interested in serving. But I also wanted to, when I put this agenda together, I did not know that I would have that as a potential tool. And could very well be that the date doesn't work for someone or whatever. So I think it's still valid that we spend a few minutes talking about, I think it's still valid that we spend a few minutes talking about if you are aware of any organizations that might have a leadership team that wants to be more involved in the local community, or if you have friends or neighbors that you know might want to be more involved. And we don't have to get into the specific, want to be more involved. And we don't have to get into the specific names, but if you have some ideas, I'm more than happy to chase them down and make the invitations.
What kind of timing do we have to submit?
I would imagine unless the two people who have said that they would still be open, both accept, have said that they would still be open, both accept, in which case I would imagine they could be on the agenda for the second meeting in December and on board for our January meeting.
That's the council agenda.
Right.
Right.
The mayor appoints and the council approves.
Okay.
Yep. Would be a fantastic fit, or is looking to serve in some capacity that you might want to recommend.
I don't have a particular name, but I think it would be wise if we had someone from the Business Park, a manufacturer in the Business Park.
I have asked a couple, but
Have you?
I'll keep asking.
Okay.
The president of the Franklin Business Park Consortium to put it on their agenda for December.
Mm-hmm.
And see if anybody will volunteer. That's a great idea.
Yeah. Because looking at all of us, I don't think we, I'm not sure about you. Do you make things?
Well, I work at SC Johnson, so
Okay, so you do make some things. Yes, yes, definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
And it doesn't have to be somebody who works in Franklin.
They have to live here.
They have to live here.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, regardless if they work here, they have to live here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So think about your neighbors.
I mean, if we have a, if we do a distribution, like I, well, if there's any volunteers to go to the city website
Yes.
Page down and then fill out an application. So that's the process.
I will send the link to that, to all of you
Okay.
On Monday.
And I can get that out.
Now, do the other council members also send the emails like you do? I happen to be in your
I don't know. I don't know. I think Ed is thinking about doing it, but I don't.
Kristin does something. I think Kristin does something.
Does she?
She does.
Kristin does something.
Does she?
She does. I think Alderman and Hanneman does as well, but I'm not, I'm not sure about the others.
So where do they get the emails from? Do you send a letter or an email?
Email. Email.
And you get the emails from where? For all the constituents in here?
Yeah.
For all the constituents in here?
Yeah. I, since I've been in Alderman, if I get, someone contacts me, I ask them if I can put their email on my distribution list. I send them all the agendas.
Yeah.
I send them anything that's of interest coming up in the city. And with relevant comments, of course, from Mike Barber.
Right. Exactly.
And over the years, I've just developed a list.
Yeah. Okay. Got it. One that comes to mind is our president of Chamber of Commerce, and that's Doug Milovich. It might be something, if he weren't, and I'd say he's probably got plenty to do, but he does have plenty to do, but I'm just saying, he might be a, someone interested.
I'm writing it down.
Okay.
Okay. Well, keep thinking, you can always send it directly to me only. And then on Monday, I will follow up on this, and then I'll follow up with the mayor and see if he wants to move forward with following up with any of those folks who are still on that list, following up with any of those folks who are still on that list from the last three years. And then we'll just go from there and figure it out, and hopefully we'll have a full commission by the next meeting next month. Okay.
An update on advertising.
Okay. So, couple of things here. Okay. So, couple of things here. Do North Media's audience extension. I have been slammed the last two months, and I have submitted all my materials, I have signed the contract, but we have not yet actually gotten to the, it's signed the contract, but we have not yet actually gotten to the, it's out there, doing what it's supposed to be doing. That will happen before the end of the month, so the money will be encumbered in 2021, and it shouldn't be an issue. I, it just kind of got stuck behind other things that bubbled to the top and had to be addressed first. Kind of got stuck behind other things that bubbled to the top and had to be addressed first. So, it is moving forward much slower than I had intended. So I have here the council action sheet that I have prepared for, the council action sheet that I have prepared for next Tuesday's meeting. And if you get to the bottom of page one, you'll see that I actually refer to the fact that
We get one more?
Oh, yeah.
Nope, not there.
It's in the, yeah, it's in your council packet.
You need one.
Uh, yeah, that'd be great, then I could refer to one and
I mean, I haven't picked mine up yet, my packet left, I'll check it out.
It's just odd, I should have had enough. Oh, I've got one, yeah, I do have an extra. There you go.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
First district, Alderman.
Oh, great, good.
So, just here to listen and see what's going on.
Sounds good.
Am I in your way?
No, you are not, you're fine.
Should I stand up, so I am in your way?
You have this red dot in the middle of your forehead.
Okay.
Okay.
But I'm bummed, sorry, sorry, that was terrible, I was listening to NPR today.
Ask in the minutes.
I know, shame on me. Okay. All right, so I'm going to pull these up if need be for your reference. All right, so I'm going to pull these up if need be for your reference. These two items will be in, are going to be included in the council's packet, so that they have this reference as well. And hopefully they'll open today. Essentially, you would ask me at the last meeting in September to, essentially, you would ask me at the last meeting in September to do some final follow-up. You were curious about how this thing worked, what websites were they using. So I had a long conversation with Austin, and then he streamlined the proposal, and in doing so, I found, I found that it was much easier to understand what it is that the offer was. And so essentially, we all understood what the concept is, right? You go to a website, there's targeted advertising there, or you type something, your computer has already profiled you, they know what you do. So for example, if you're a site selector, they will, they, meaning Multi-View, will know how to target people of certain profiles with message and industry-specific content. So, in this one, okay, yeah, a lot of the beginning part is things that you already know, but where it gets interesting is things that we didn't talk about, what he didn't talk about was, you could actually, we can actually create short video ads that people can't skip over if they're using connected TV.
Is that streaming?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with it, so I'd need to learn a little more about that. But it also highlighted the fact that there would be opportunities for creating various types of advertising, not just static banner ads or animated ads, or links. There would also be things like video content.
Like their mother might be a news channel or something, and then they give you a box with an arrow on, and you hit the box to watch that particular program?
Yeah.
And then you have a commercial that comes on first
Yes. I'm pretty sure that's it. I have asked Austin to be available, to be on a Zoom, to be, is looking at this piece. Last time, you made a recommendation for Site Selection Magazine for about 18,000, and there were two different members on the council at that time, two different Alders on the council, but it was a split vote, three to three, and the mayor broke the tie. So I am trying to provide as much information, it's easier for them to make a decision, and I've got two of you sitting in the room, so I feel kind of ridiculous talking about you in the third person, but I want to make sure that we have the expert who can address any of the questions like that. What exactly is connected TV, since that's going to be part of their, the packet materials. And talk about that I think are really interesting is this site retargeting, and that's, that's similar to where, if you go to a shoe website, and then you go to another site, you're likely to see a banner ad for those shoes on the right side. That's site retargeting, and then the geo-fencing, this, and then the geo-fencing. This, I think, has enormous potential, given the logistics of where the city of Franklin is located. Imagine the 150,000-plus visitors to Ballpark Commons, they're now getting caught up in this geo-fence, and for a certain amount of time, they're going to receive targeted ads about Franklin. Or a certain amount of time, they're going to receive targeted ads about Franklin. And that would also be helpful for short-term visitors coming anywhere, we can place a fence all the way around the city.
Question. Do the, do those visitors have to do any things in order to be a part of, do those visitors have to do any things in order to be a part of them? It's just physically
It picks up their IP address.
Phone just happens to be at Ballpark Commons, and then it's picked up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it could be moved to Ballpark Commons, too.
Right, right.
Anybody in there.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'm sure there's motions for opting out and things like that. That's where Austin would be helpful, because he has the technical expertise to answer a lot of those questions, and I do not. I've got the marketing background, so I understand enough about this, too.
We could probably even target people who came at the Business Park.
Yes, sure.
And then the truck drivers.
The Polish Center.
Yeah, right.
Every restaurant.
Made robo-call.
Yeah.
I don't think there'd be robo-calls. I think, again, the geo-fencing is going to be targeting those users when they go to specific websites. I don't think it's going to like pop up on their phone and say, hi, you're in Franklin.
Right.
It's going to, it's going to be like the site, like the retargeting.
Yeah.
Only it's, instead of up somebody who matches a certain profile at a certain site, it's matching people who are geographically here, and that's how they vet them for specific Franklin messaging.
Sure.
And then, they have the full, and then, they have the full support of their entire team, so I don't have to be good at doing banner ads, I've got somebody there who's going to do them for me. I'll give them the content, and they'll put it all together and make sure that it all works. What I like about this over some of the print advertising that we've done over the past, what I like about this over some of the print advertising that we've done over the past year or two is that there's a report portal, so you can actually see. Now, you can't necessarily know if somebody's read it, but you can know if it was put in front of their face. And if it gets put in front of their face enough times, you really significantly increase your opportunity of the, having a pierce the cloud of clutter that is between you and the screen. So this is going to be included in there, and it also, oh, this is the old one. The new one just says 18,000 on it. We took all of this off, and that's what's going to be in the packet, but essentially otherwise, it's the same.
Our guys here, who we're talking about, were these the ones that had a lot of experience with other townships, or are these the guys that don't?
Yes, this, and this, this one should answer that for you, so
Okay. So when you said yes, yes it is, or you mean yes it isn't?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is some of the demographics that will be
All right, this is the guy, not the girl?
This is the guy, not the girl. This is Austin, the first one that we talked to.
Right.
So, there's just some background about the company, and that will be helpful for those who are not on the EDC. And then their story, but this is where it starts to get interesting, interesting. And then their story, but this is where it starts to get interesting, interesting. This is the Michigan version of the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, they're using it. I will look up and have it on hand for the meeting, but I think it was the greater, no. I did call and follow up, I made on, on one of the referrals, but I think it was the greater, no. I did call and follow up, I made on, on one of the referrals, and found out that they love the program, they use it year after year, they think it's fantastic, had nothing but good things to say about Multi-View and about working with Austin.
And so, as I see it, the 70 EDOs, and I see economic development, economic development
Yeah.
Organization, what does ESO stand for?
Organizations.
Yeah. But that was, again, that was helpful to me, at least it verifies or says, hey, you know
Yeah.
Yeah, you have
They know what they're doing.
That's particularly
And then remember that Multi-View is not just an economic development sector organization, clients that are in those various other sectors.
Yeah.
And then it goes a little more into how they profile the digital customer, and then how they kind of drill down and create those targeted, and it's not just the individuals that they're reaching out to. So that's the number of people that they're reaching out to, and they're coming at them, where is it? I wrote it down in here. Over 12 nations that they get involved with, so they've got, they're, they're creating an amplifier effect, right? So they're, they're identifying the sites where the people who have these targeted profiles are going. And then they're also finding other ways to find these targeted profilers. So, it's, Franklin is just, is pretty intense.
So, for the 18,000, do they have a number of impressions that they were committed to?
Yes, 1,125,000 impressions, which comes out to less than $0.02 per impression. If you broke it out by 365 days in the year, because remember, this is online, you've got site selectors at home on Christmas Day, kids go down for a nap, pull up their phone, the advertisement's going to be there. So it's 365, 24/7, and that comes out to less than $50 a day.
So this is a total year buy?
Yes.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
I thought we were
So
So this is a total year buy?
Yes.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
I thought we were doing a first year, like for three months or something.
Well, this is for a full year.
Okay.
Is it, is it for a full year, or is it basically just so the exposures run out, you know?
No, it's a full year.
So we could actually get more?
You could. I think that's just what they guarantee.
So we could actually get more?
You could. I think that's just what they guarantee.
Theoretically, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's like a floor, and then, okay.
And then, so they keep talking more about that.
Can you go back to that?
Yeah.
Yellow, there it says, okay, I target, I target the relevant messaging. Okay.
And then behavioral, behavioral targeting. Where are people going? How are they behaving online? How do you get the ads in front of them? A lot of this is search engine optimization and search engine marketing, and by the way, this company is also a Google partner, so they've got some search
And are we going to, I thought in one of them, so we're going to try and draw the correlation? They saw the ad, they bought or came?
Um, yes, it should be part of the dashboard.
Okay.
Yep. And that should be real-time, so this is something that I think could be provided to all of you to look
How many deals would you like out of this?
Um, that's hard to say. I mean, obviously, as many as I can get, but there will come a point where I will not be able to effectively manage them
Yeah, but if you got one substantial deal, this will pay the perspective, so when you present to the, you know, Alderman here is like, guys, one.
So impressions is to
Create awareness.
Um, like, the impressions is the prospect, and then somebody actually picking up the phone to call you, is the same as like, in Site Selection, do a, an RFP for somebody who came through Site Selection Magazine to, to look for a new site, right? So they're kind of comparable in that way. There's no guarantee that we will, we will convert this into anything.
Right.
But the amplification of getting our message out there, out there, and the nimbleness and the flexibility that we'll have, you know, if something happens, it's just amazing in the community, like Seputo Cheese, for example, that would have been a really fun thing to put out there, join Seputo Cheese and come to Franklin.
Mm-hmm.
You know? We, we, we are the cheese cutters of Wisconsin, or we, we, we are the cheese cutters of Wisconsin, or, you know, there could have just a million ways that we could have went with that, and still could, actually.
We're not expecting them to call us, are we?
Uh, yes, there is call to action on those. So if someone actually clicks on something, so the impression is it's on the screen, doesn't mean they see it. Impression is it's on the screen, doesn't mean they see it. Clicking on it's another thing.
Right.
Then, that's where they would work with me to, to determine what the, do we send them to the website, does it automatically make a call, does it bring up a contact window? What would it do?
Okay, you've got options.
Contact window, what would it do?
Okay, you've got options. My experience in this is that, you know, it's an email-based business. For them, to expect them to call, who?
Yeah, but there's something else, and I can't remember where I read it. If somebody actually goes, let's say we have a contact form, and they start to fill it out and they abandon it, let's say we have a contact form, and they start to fill it out and they abandon it, there's a cookie there now, and we can, they still get followed with advertising, so
Yeah, correct.
Whereas, if it's a, you know, a print magazine, they
Right, no, no, no.
Yeah, they can pick up the phone. I didn't put a phone number in any of our advertising, I just put the website. So, so, that's a really good question, and I would rely heavily on their expertise and their, their past knowledge of what works best to actually hook the fish.
Yeah, because, I mean, we do a good online advertising, and it's usually a click that says, call me. So we'll call them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So this just goes on, and there's
Can I, just before, has that been your experience in development? That might be your experience in your business.
Training, yeah.
But in development, is, wouldn't have, wouldn't they call you to find out or speak to someone personally?
Um, yes and no. Variables, and they pull it up, and they go, we want to be in the Milwaukee-Chicago corridor, and they start out really big, and they go, oh, look, there's not a lot of density here, let's zoom in, or they come in through the WEDC, or there's some other research or some other factor. I would guess that for every call that comes through, because, every call that comes through because they might think that there's a site for them here, there's probably a dozen or more that just go, no, that community's not right, for whatever reason, and they move on. So this is an opportunity to try to catch them before they get farther down that research path and eliminate us, before we even have a chance to
But that's not what you were asking, Mike. You were asking
And eliminate us before we even have a chance to
But that's not what you were asking, Mike. You were asking, does, in, in my world, they'll click if they want me to get back to them as opposed to you, in economic development, do they call you, or do they
Do they want to talk to about it? Do they want to talk to someone?
Only if they've gone a certain
Right.
Certain
Right.
Let me rephrase that. The bigger the fish, the less likely you're going to get a call, and the more likely you're going to have them come in through the WEDC or M7, or they'll heavily vet you before you get the call. If it's a small thing, like, you know, a small company that does, sure, they'll call. So it depends on the level of investment, where they're at in their process. I mean, it's a lot of variables, but, but in general, the more attractive the project, the less likely you'll get a direct call. So this is going to be part of the packet as well. And I asked him to send me shorter ones, and I think I'm loading up the longer ones, but there's good information in there for council. How many pages is this? 28? No, this is the one that's in their packet. So then there's just, you know, lots of information, and hopefully all of the answers that they would be looking for, you guys will. The clerk's office added a bad key notice, I believe, to the packet, because I would like to invite all of you to attend, just as a show of solidarity and support of the program, should you elect tonight to make a recommendation to council that they
That's on December 7th?
It's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Fourth, fifth, yeah, 7th.
Okay.
I'll, I'll find you there.
You'll probably make the motion? So, given that, I tried to boil everything down, tried to kind of encapsulate some of the other things that have been done to highlight that, one, the EDC has been looking at various ways of business attraction here, but, two, we've been absent, business attraction here, but, two, we've been absent. We're not a player in the online sector at all, and if we're going to have a full-bodied program, I mean, we're already doing little marketing and little promotions that can be really significant, but you're not reaching, that can be really significant, but you're not reaching the same audience as you would with an online presence. So, if we're going to do soup to nuts and small to bag, this is a missing element.
Well, I think based on, you know, a discussion, we're all in. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so all you need is a motion in a second.
Just a motion in a second, and we're good to go?
Yes, please.
All right. Do we have a, a motion?
I saw a move.
All right.
To recommend
Recommend to the common council. Word it as you wish, but yes.
But to spend $18,000 on a Multi-View annual package
Yes.
For 2022.
Holo's opposed? Moves?
Okay. And now that we, can I ask a question?
No.
Okay.
Yes, of course.
Okay, we just passed this. Now, I just have a question, that the motion is to accept the recommendation and approve the purchase of an $18,000 advertising
That's the council's, that's the council's request.
Now, is that
Yes.
Do you want to carry over?
It's in next year's budget.
Oh, I, I see.
I would also be looking to try to carry over, but I have to look and see what else is coming down the pike in terms of membership renewals and swag. I try to use December to purchase things like lanyards and, and other things, and to I try to use December to purchase things like lanyards and, and other things and to purchase things like lanyards and, and other things. And the mayor came in the other day and wanted something for kids. So I think I'm going to look at some pens, you know, some cheap stick pens and then some nicer pens for, you know, more dignitary type swag events. And that sort of thing. So, yes, we do have the money. And that sort of thing. So, yes, we do have the money.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because I actually read the minutes sometimes of the common council. And in October, they approved $8,000 for the economic development activities. How is that different? For the economic development activities, how is that different?
That was specifically for the business appreciation celebration because we only get a budget of 5,000. And while we actually received more in donations than we spent, the money that comes back into the city does not go back into that same line item, it goes into the general fund. The money that comes back into the city does not go back into that same line item, it goes into the general fund. So it looks like I overspent. So that was done to ensure that there was proper matching. So that when they were looking at the trend of how much that event costs over time, they would know exactly what was really happening versus how much that event costs over time, they would know exactly what was really happening versus what it looked like.
It was sort of to cover all bases for that amount.
While we're looking for clarification, the, how it's written here, it suggests that we're also still considering real estate magazine, you know, business expansion magazine and site selection magazine?
You guys already approved the Heartland Business Real Estate Magazine and that went in for November. I've not gotten a copy of the magazine, so I'm going to need to place a call and find out why. But that already went in and was already approved and ready. I think I sent this to all of you. I sent it to the elected officials, the department heads and the EDC. And I'll pass that around, but that's this one. And I didn't do it on purpose, but I paid for a half page and I got a full page. Go me. So that worked, that really works, so you can pass it around.
Well, we voted. And I, just to reiterate, I, I'm a fan of the electronic. I think it's going to generate and give us more ability to see if we did anything.
A lot more coverage at least than print.
So, given that, needs to be updating the economic development website. It is woefully out of date.
Yeah.
And I just, I just haven't had any time to do it, but at the same point, it might be a good time to get the ideas of the EDC and do everything at once, so.
Okay, anything else on that one? All right, so let's move on to item number seven, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce Monthly Update. Speaking on behalf of the chamber, we're going to close off 2021 in a positive. Came in the end of last year, not surprising with COVID and everything else. We started off first quarter pretty, well, pretty soft. In fact, we were doing a lot of programs for free. And that's not wrong in the sense that it's really for the constituents and how do we help them grow the business? We did all sorts of different online programs, things, sorts of different online programs. Things like how to handle worrying stress, how to, you know, lead better meetings online, things like that. So that's where we, we're at the beginning. Things start opening up in June. June was not bad, July was better, August was even better. So we're in a positive, was even better. So we're in a positive. Now, normally, and Barb can speak to this too, you know, the amount of money coming in at the end of November and December is not a whole lot with the holidays and that kind of stuff. On the plus side, we have our chamber, so, chamber celebration. I believe the data is here in February and I'll get it to Cali. And this year we have as our speaker, the University of Wisconsin's running back, the new freshman.
Really?
Yeah, so he's going to be our freshman.
Really?
Yeah, so he's going to be our spokesperson, yeah.
That's awesome, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, Braylon Allen, yeah. And so it's one of those kind of things like, we thought about a number of different folks. And I did suggest that we say, well, let's go see if we can get a, you know, an entity of some kind. And of course, some kind. And of course, Yalas didn't, you know, quite pan insofar as how much or Yanis and that kind of stuff. So who can we get? And, you know, we looked at various different things. We wanted to stay away from politics, just because. So then you start to say what could be fun. And from the time we, this is going back a couple of weeks. And he's, we've seen a tape on him. He is, he's not going to be a superstar, but he was articulate and he'll have lots to talk about. So it should be kind of a, a fun event on that kind of stuff.
He's 17, so I mean, that's...
Yeah, but he comes across, yeah, he'll tell you, he now comes under the new rulings that allows athletes to get paid for the likeness and image. And so he fits under it. Yeah, so that, that'll be our spokesperson at that event.
Is this Burkett?
Sorry?
What is his name again?
Braylon.
Braylon Allen.
B-R-A-Y-L-A-N, something like that.
What is he allowed to receive? Is there a limit on that or?
No, as a matter of fact, I just...
No?
No, it's, it's apparently just his past. I guess he was a young man just committed from Texas, a young man just committed from Texas to go to the University of Ohio, be Ohio State, you know? Million dollars for signing to get his likeness. It's going to be the wild west guys. Can you imagine coming out of high school? Well, anyhow, high school. Well, anyhow, there's others like that too. So that said though, it should be fun. So that's what we've got there. Let's go to number eight, the business appreciation celebration review, 2021 and date and location for 2022.
Yes, so I sent you the sponsors and all of that good stuff. Just this week, we got the last sponsorship check in. I have purchased some stationery that has Franklin branding. At first, it's kind of funny, haha, in hindsight. Thought it meant like it wasn't shiny.
Right.
They meant it was like literally flat. So I have a bunch of these which are kind of nice if you just want to throw a little, hi, so great to see you and toss it in the mail. But that wasn't what I was looking for. I was actually looking for this, which then they, they fixed and sent me the correct item. So I've got actual blank on the insides that are branded on the front and the back. And you are also welcome to take some of, any of these with you. If you have any possibility that you might be wanting to reach out and say thank you to anybody on behalf of the city of Franklin. And I will also be bringing these on, actually, and I will also be bringing these on, actually, it's not on the agenda, I don't know if I can. I'll give them to the mayor and let him decide if he wants to, wants to bring it up or not. So these are just some, some little things that I got. And so the folks who sponsored, everybody who gave, so the folks who sponsored, everybody who gave swag already received a thank you. And Missy received a thank you. Everybody who needed a thank you got one except for the sponsors, because I was waiting for them to all be in so I could just batch it and get it done once. Next week and I'll get those out as well. Other than that, it's closed out for 2021. I continue to bump into people who just tell me what a great time they had and what great energy there was there. And the mayor's feedback was, he likes it a tuck away. He would not be opposed to having it continue to stay.
Did they contribute anything though to it?
Yes, they gave a handful of items for the swag bag. And they did not make us be a member.
Okay.
So, yeah. What is everyone else's thoughts? I'd love to hear what you think.
First thing I thought, number one, the microphones did work.
They were great, yeah.
Terrific.
Yeah.
And the food, I thought, was significantly better than previous. I thought everybody had plenty.
Yeah, yeah, and the mashed potato bar.
Yeah, but a strong guy like that.
Nailed it, and the mashed potato bar.
Yeah, but a strong guy like that.
Nailed it, nailed it.
And I thought the interaction, maybe, and I'm not sure what we did differently, but it seemed like people were more conversant and maybe it was just the time difference or whatever. It just seemed like it was easier for people to go for some early observations. For some early observations.
One of the items that I will be ordering is a backdrop with the city logo on it. And it will be a designated picture taking spot and we will have somebody designated to taking pictures. And after each thing is done or after the whole thing, there will be a designated time for pictures because that was, that was something else. Trying to get everything lined up for the press release.
Yeah.
So...
It might even be worth having a professional photographer, you think?
It might.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That could be a must.
Could be, something to consider.
I think one thing that I think we might want to, the winner is in each category. If we at least give a couple of sentences about why, rather than just announce their name and their company. We don't want to drag on the event for too long, but I think just a little bit of an explanation as to why they did receive this award.
Actually, I was going to say the same. Yeah, yeah. Being here, their commitment to the environment.
Because of this and this and this.
Yeah, helping the community. Yeah, and two or three things, so it's not, to your point, dragging it out or making any of the other nominees, you know, feel slighted.
Tell me more about that because I, I think, tell me more about that because I, I think one of the concerns is if you do go on and say, oh, this firm did all these great things, by definition, are the others slighted? It's just a, a thought, which is if you just say, hey, they won and the title says, you know, the outstanding whatever, and the title says, you know, the outstanding whatever.
Well, it, it would be better to say something rather than they won because they're cute. You know, there, you need to have some kind of a explanation of why it was that they won. Otherwise...
Maybe just an introduction to the winner, like the winning company opened their, opened their doors and then they, they did this and the other thing without actually maybe saying that that's why they won. Just as kind of like a, this is a great company.
Exactly, right.
It just seemed kind of awkward to me to get everybody up there and then one is announced and...
Maybe ask them to stand up at their place.
I don't know how you...
And then call up the winner and then...
And we could say, this, this company has been here this long, would you please, you know, wave to the crowd and bring up the one that is the winner? It just seemed awkward that there's five people standing here, oh, okay.
We're losers.
And then, and I think it was a chance for all eyes to still be on them.
Put the plaque to the back of the room.
We want all three or all five.
Where the photo booth would be.
I don't know.
It just seemed like an awkward moment every time for me, that's all I'm saying. I don't know what that would be.
And I guess yours, it really kind of comes down to how we say it.
Yeah.
It's doable.
I've seen it done that way where the nominees don't even stand up. They just read it out loud, then she reads it out loud and then announces the winner. And only the winner comes up and there's a photo op with the winner. But then there's more photo ops at the end with all the nominees as well.
But we could, we could even say that there is one or two sentence thing to highlight them and to show that they're here and why.
Did you all notice that there were no proclamations and no state level legislators at the event?
I did notice that. Even our local legislator was not here.
I called them all. Nope, and I stand corrected.
Patty was here, she's a...
Senator Craig and Representative Skoronsky, Senator Craig's office did these proclamations. But then he and Representative Skoronsky presented them simultaneously. And Senator Craig is no longer simultaneously. And Senator Craig is no longer in office. And when I called Senator Julian's office, they, they said he was not attending and no, they were not planning on doing that.
Wasn't Julie there?
Nobody was there at the state level. I mean, I don't think it took away from the event at all. I mean, I don't think it took away from the event at all.
No. I, I was sitting next to Patty and she was making snide comments about the, the presentator. So that wasn't, that wasn't great.
About what?
Yeah.
He didn't like the presenter?
Very, very political comments and things, so it was unimpressive.
Oh, about, about the keynote speaker?
Yeah, yeah. Disappointing, but, yeah, at least she was there.
Yeah.
True.
Okay. I had a couple of thoughts a little earlier because it was hard to call that room to order. The, the energy was off the charts and I didn't want to, I was loath to break that up. And once the formal piece is over, a lot of people go home.
Yeah.
A lot of the events that I attend, they start at four or 4:30. I don't think that that would be detrimental to us.
Didn't we start at five?
Five.
I don't think that would be bad at all.
And what time did the program start again?
Six. But it didn't actually start till 6:15 because she was running behind.
That is true. She was a little bit late.
Yeah.
Are you thinking the event would start at 4:30, but we'd still have, like, are you thinking the event would start at 4:30, but we'd still have, like, 6 o'clock would be the formal event?
Still 6 o'clock, yeah.
Just an extra half an hour to mingle.
Yep, but then all the food would be out early and, you know, people would, would have an expectation that, you know, as soon as the program is over, boom, they're gone.
Yeah.
Or they could stay, as soon as the program is over, boom, they're gone.
Yeah.
Or they could stay, you know?
In my experience, it's always been that you need about an hour and a half of the cocktail hour, the networking part of it.
Yeah.
I think that would be, that would be a good idea. They've got a nice window then to, to show up. They've got a nice window then to, to show up.
And for me, this, there was a lot more mingling and talking amongst people that didn't know each other. There, I mean, there was a lot more of that that went on. That's what we're trying to promote.
Yeah.
When if we get an hour and a half hour of doing that? When if we get an hour and a half hour of doing that as opposed to the first year, which wasn't as mingling?
Yes, yeah. It's just, I think it just, we keep tweaking it, it keeps getting better every year. The other thing I would suggest, if I can remember what it was now. Thing I would suggest, if I can remember what it was now. Don't come to me.
Well, that's what we can, you may think about it.
Two potato bars, was that?
Two potato bars?
What in this corner?
Hot potato, cold potato.
But perhaps we could put a, a, a little video together of the, and I'm just thinking showing that up on the wall.
For the nominees?
I was thinking nominees initially, but I'm also thinking that if you bought and came, you're a participant with some form of pension, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a ton of work. You would, you would need to, you would need to double your budget at least. You'd have to have a professional videographer or you guys would all have to... I just, I think that we don't have the resources for that right now. We've got time to plan for something like that.
But a PowerPoint presentation would not be that difficult.
What about a picture of the company?
Well, just pictures.
When you make the nomination, the company shows up.
We could do that, but we didn't have any PowerPoint this year because if the screen were down, it would have changed the dynamic. We might have to look at taking the other room, which is much bigger, and I don't know if they have. I'm not poo-pooing the ideas, I'm just thinking about the logistics of getting it done. And it was a Herculean effort to get the nominees buttoned up and get those trophies. And as in all past years, the amount of input from the business community, from anyone, has been abysmal. And that's got to be tightened up and, and starting now, we need to get a portal on the website so that people can be making nominations all year long and we need it year long. And if we don't, we're going to end up in the same boat next year. And cutoff needs to be September 1st. And you guys need to make your decisions at the September meeting. And that gives everybody who's nominated a month to get it on their calendar. Because especially with the pandemic, I was like begging, the pandemic, I was like begging people, you're a nominee, can you please send someone? Because they didn't have enough notice, because we didn't pick them until less than a month before the event.
Does September even give us enough time for that? Because we meet at the, the end of September.
Depends on when you schedule it in October.
Yeah, but I mean, the end of September.
Depends on when you schedule it in October.
Yeah, but I mean, it's normally, it's like mid-October, right?
It's usually the third or fourth week of October. And this year it was a week earlier than the year before because the mayor couldn't make it and then he couldn't make it anyway. So I think you just pick your date and if people can make it, they couldn't make it anyway. So I think you just pick your date and if people can make it, they can make it. But to your point, yeah.
Yeah. This is in August.
I, I do think that extra week helped us in October, the time before.
Yes.
So I mean, you know, let's...
I would agree. So...
September's late too, because our meeting is late in September. I almost say August, or maybe we do a special one, but the fact is...
Yeah, just have a special one.
And at one time, we did go out and do interviews. This is a goofy year though too, guys. I mean, let's face it.
It is.
When was, when was the pandemic going to sort out, sort out, kind of maybe in? And I'm like, we could, on the other hand, when do you want it? When is September or you want it August? August for September, October.
End of August.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's a fourth Monday, right? So you're looking at sometimes only a scant couple of days left in August. So, yeah, if you cut it off before the August meeting and you, the August meeting, yes, that would work. And then you have more time to play with. You can do, you could do if, if, if the makeup of the commission at that time or, you know, whatever's happening in terms of staff availability, you could put up videos for several, in terms of staff availability, you could put up videos for several weeks ahead of the event. You know, that's something you could do too. Yeah, but I, I think, I think everyone kind of has to make a, a commitment to really pound on the nominations between now. To really pound on the nominations between now and August of next year. Because if we don't, we're going to be back in this room stuck in open meeting trying to, you know, take the nominations that we have and discuss them. It just, it's, it was a very tight time.
Normally meet on the fourth Monday?
And actually, if there was time under the next meeting agenda item, we can discuss that because I think the fourth Monday is problematic for a number of reasons.
The fourth Monday in August of next year is on the 22nd. Because the first happens. Cause the first happens.
And we also run up against Memorial Day and Labor Day and a lot of other things. Um, you know, the first, the second or third Monday would be better, the Monday between the council meetings is really the ideal Monday. But I'm jumping ahead.
Yeah.
It goes up against personnel.
I did look at that, um, the personnel is at like five or five thirty, right?
Six.
And this is at six thirty. Um, we could look at it and you don't have to make any decisions today, but. And I also found out that like the environmental commission, they shouldn't stay, but. And I also found out that like the environmental commission, they don't do a December meeting, they split the November and December and they do it halfway in between and they set that up at the beginning of the year. So, um, December twenty seventh might be problematic for some of you, we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
Seventh might be problematic for some of you, we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
And, um, I had nothing else on the business appreciation celebration.
I, I had just one really small thing, one of the nominees said they spent some time creating a, an acceptance speech. Um, just cause they didn't know if they had to do it or not, so we might just want to be explicit, like, you don't have to do that, don't worry about it.
Oh, wait, if you could share with me privately who that is, I would like to know and if there's an opportunity for me to apologize, I will.
Oh, they, and they were, they were a younger group and they were very excited to be nominated, but they wanted to be prepared, so it wasn't a negative comment, they just wanna make sure they're not pulled away.
We haven't done it in the past, is something we should consider. The downside is they can be bad.
And have it double the time, yeah.
Long, yeah. And long.
Something about that. I heard back from a developer who talked about one of the projects that they did in Franklin and that they felt that their company should win an award for it. And it made me think that maybe there was a place for a project of the year or a legacy award, some, for a project of the year or a legacy award, something that happened that created massive impact and it doesn't have to necessarily be a business. For example, um, Ballpark Commons would have, would have been an example, or, um, the first business that breaks ground in the new corporate park. Or, um, the first business that breaks ground in the new corporate park, or Supudo Cheese, where, where it's not just that you're recognizing a large business or a small business or something like that, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a game-changing project. So something to think about, no decisions today, but, no decisions today, but.
And it doesn't have to be something that's given every year.
Right.
That's true.
It can be a, a special.
Yeah, special, if, if there's.
If there's something that deserves it.
That really works, that's good fun.
And then I will just share, um, the mayor doesn't care to see the whole thing go away, so it's just something to, to take under advisement.
I'm sorry, he didn't like the event?
It never has, no, the event, yes, the awards piece, he would like to see that all go away, he doesn't care for that component. And I would be. I'm just, I'm just telling you, he thinks it'd be the opportunity to be appreciated and he just does not like, does not like the award piece, so I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Do you have any idea of how many people actually attended who were not nominees? I know that's hard to be.
Uh, the majority are not nominees.
Majority are not.
And I don't, I don't have any, you know, strong feelings about it one way or the other, I just think if we're gonna do it, we need to do it as good as we possibly can, but.
And, and I belong to the six chambers.
But remember, this is not a chamber.
I understand, well, okay, so the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but part, I mean, part of our task is to retain businesses and I think part of that is recognizing the businesses, so.
Which is what the event is supposed to do, right? I'm just being devil's advocate, right?
Yeah, but outside of the awards, how are you recognizing them with those events?
Well, they pay twenty-five dollars and it's like a seven.
I guess, I don't know, that, that, that doesn't very much weight with me, I guess, you know, like, you know.
It's a night taken away from the family or something like that.
You have, as a commission, you have a right to do what you like to do with the event. Um, I, I, I don't want you to get the wrong idea that he's, he's saying shut the event. Um, I, I, I don't want you to get the wrong idea that he's, he's saying shut it down, I'm just giving you feedback that, um, you might wanna consider and, um, as you're planning for the next event, that's all.
Well, thank you.
If you didn't know and you had a conversation with somebody somewhere, you'd be blind, if you didn't know and you had a conversation with somebody somewhere, you'd be blindsided and I would not be doing my job if I love that to happen.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, while we're on it, I mean, what is your thought, mine is I think there should be an award.
I, I agree, I, I think.
I think we're kinda lame without it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
We just have to change, you know, you, we, I, I think that's really how you, you say you appreciate them, you recognize them, that's part of the award.
I recall some of the events, business appreciation things that have happened in the past and they were usually held at a, one of the businesses in the business park. And there was a little bit of explanation about the company and then that was it and it was okay.
Yeah.
And there was food and whatever, but I think, I think the awards are, are a good idea to give businesses some recognition.
Yeah.
Mike?
Can we do awards outside? Like, we could have, we, we as an economic development committee could say, we'd like, we appreciate your business, here's an award for this year for whatever the category is and make a presentation at their company.
Not make it a public event, sort of thing.
Well, we'd publicize it.
Yes, event, sort of thing.
Well, we'd publicize it, the news, you know, and say, um, then the employees could be involved with it, if, if the site too, or whatever they, whatever they wanted to do, as far as we would go and make the presentation to them. Outside of the business appreciation night, where we would, outside of the business appreciation night, where we would maybe select through, go through our process, whatever that process would look like, given new criteria, and say, we, the economic, we appreciate your business, Economic Development Commission would like to award you with a, and then say, maybe you can publish. And then say, maybe you can publish who, who else was in that category without having it to be added in. I don't know.
Interesting. What do you think? I know you're not on the committee, but what do you think?
It's hard for me to.
I know you're not on the committee, but what do you think?
It's hard for me to sit on my hands and not say anything, I'm not supposed to say anything.
Oh, you're not? Never mind, I'm sorry. You were here, I gave.
You're the chair, you asked.
Yeah, I am, oh, thank you, glad I know, so the chair says.
Suspend the rules.
Yeah.
Suspend the rules.
Yeah, what are you gonna say? I don't know, we took the time to come and be with you.
You could do that, that'd be fine, have a separate thing, I don't, I don't mind the awards at the, at the meeting event either. Uh, one of the things that I, I would like to see brought forward, um, and copy, like to see brought forward, um, and copying something we do in the Berlin. Um, the mayor does monthly visits.
Does, does everybody know you're the president of the chamber?
Uh, I don't know, I'm the president of the Nibro Chamber.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So, the city development director, the mayor, some other staff, uh, we get somebody from the school district to talk about apprenticeships and all those kinda things in the chamber. And each month we go to a, a business and it's a tour and, uh, you know, what's going on, is the, what's going on? Is the mayor an opportunity to find out, hey, you know, we have an expansion, but we're worried because our parking lot's gonna take away your green space and all those kinda things, so a lot of conversations go on back. It's kinda off the, the topic a little bit, but I think that's something that economic development could certainly be involved by places that may be thinking about moving or expanding or telling us, which has happened in the past, so.
So my question to you was, awards or not, what do you think?
I said, I said, I think either way is fine.
Okay. All right, well, there you go.
And if you did, if you did, the one for the industrial things either.
Okay. Got it, all right, well, we'll take it under consideration as we get closer. Deal. All right, so are we good on, on eight? No, and, and, oh no, you still gotta cover.
That's up to you guys, it's after five on a Friday, if you want me to do it, it's on the agenda, if you wanna appreciation. Oh, yes, we should do that, yes, that's why that's on there.
Okay.
Let me bring up a calendar.
And we won't have the Packers scheduled yet.
That's true.
They shouldn't be playing in October though, right? That was the Brewers playing in October.
No.
No, it was about.
On Thursday.
They were playing on Thursday this year, that's when we had to switch the date to the fourteenth instead of the week after.
No, we switched it because the mayor couldn't make it the week after.
I didn't know that.
And I know we were sweating because the Brewers were in the playoffs and I was gonna have to try to see if I could, but I, I, I was blissfully aware of the Packers' schedule, thankfully. Maybe I just forgot about it, it's a distant, scary memory.
Mayor on your mind. And I didn't realize the mayor couldn't make it, so.
I go to twenty twenty-two?
Uh-huh, that would be helpful. There we go. There we go.
Twenty-first or twenty-eighth, is that twenty-two?
That's Friday, so it'll be the twentieth or the twenty-seventh, um, I think you're gonna bump into Halloween things on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Twentieth looks good.
Yeah, twentieth.
Twentieth? Um, let's.
Twentieth looks good.
Yeah, twentieth.
Twentieth?
Twentieth?
Um, let's look and see if that's a planned commission date.
Why, why do you think Halloween on the twenty-seventh?
Oh, it's a Halloween day.
It would be planned commission on the twentieth, the second.
So the plant commission, that's a plant commission meeting date.
Oh wait, it follows, we, our, we, ours would be.
You're on the first and the third, so you'll have a meeting on the eighteenth, so you'd have a plant commission meeting on the twentieth. Thirteenth?
I, I still don't understand, what's the matter with twenty-seventh?
Um, I, when I had young kids, there was all kinds of.
But Halloween's on the third.
Halloween's a big thing now.
Yeah, kids, kids' school parties and, you know.
Yeah, I think the high school had, pre-COVID had done a Halloween party for kids and I think it might have been on the Thursday before, um, but who knows? If they'll continue or not.
Or if that really will affect.
Yeah, twentieth, um.
I'm okay with twieth, someone did the thirteenth, you're starting to chop a lot of time off of them.
Yeah, we did it on the fourteenth this year, so. And we can't do the twentieth because this plant commission and the mayor won't be able to attend.
And the previous one we did on what would have been the twenty-seventh, so it was the last.
Right.
Thursday in the month, was the last.
Right.
Thursday in the month. Which gave us a little more time.
I like the twenty-seventh.
Franklin will always be recorded with, with me around the thirtieth. It'll be a Sunday.
The what Sunday?
I wasn't thinking about trick or treat, I was thinking about other festivities and things that have a treat, I was thinking about other festivities and things that happen in the community for the kids around.
The, I don't know when the trunk or treat thing goes on.
Yeah, I'm okay with the twenty-seventh, I mean, you guys can always change it, it's not like we're out there publicizing it right away.
Let's tentatively save the twenty-seventh.
All right.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Let's save it to twenty-seventh.
All right.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Twenty-seventh?
Okay, okay.
Are we also gonna talk about moving it up or is that already done?
Want to, I mean.
I mean, I think you're suggesting with that, fine, yeah. So that way, when you're done, you're done.
Okay, do you wanna add four P M. to that then?
Yes.
All right, then that's just part of the motion then.
I might be drunk by five.
We'll have to get the mashed potato bar out a little early. Edition, okay, not too messy.
People like that a long way, I don't know if there's a lot of leftovers, but I saw people there and I liked it.
To that point, they collect the, uh, uneaten pretty quickly. And yet there's still some food. I think they could have let it linger a little longer, just as, I mean, let's eat it up.
Yeah, great.
Well, everybody kinda left right, I mean, it's like, there's a few people that hang on, but I don't think they're eating.
They did that in two thousand eighteen too, they put the food away really fast because I finally had a chance to eat when it was all over and I'm like, where's the food? They're like, well, there's still some chips and, you know, shell-stable things over there. Shell-stable things over there. Yeah.
We should talk to them about it.
I, I asked him about leaving out boxes to let people leave, take it and they were like, no, we're not gonna do that, I think there's a lot of health.
Sure.
Stuff that they think about with food safety, but.
But like you, um, people will.
Think about with food safety, but.
But like you, um, people will want to eat afterwards.
Yeah.
Right.
Cause I didn't eat at all.
Yeah.
Well, then the dessert bar could come out at midnight.
Yes, it could. All right, I think it's an easy discussion, they can leave a little longer, but, all right, I think it's an easy discussion, they can leave a little longer, but whatever.
Well, it's up to me, it's up to the venue, I mean, if they tell me they won't leave out the food, they won't leave out the food and I don't really have any jurisdiction over that, so. Okay.
Unless it's something that's going to go bad in an hour, you can leave the food out. If it go bad in an hour, you can leave the food out. I think they're probably looking at staffing, they don't wanna pay people another hour, but you know what, we're paying for the place, or we're paying for the food.
Yeah. You're probably right.
Uh, you're in the driver's seat here.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, so we add that update.
Okay. So I will try to do this quick since I've got you here after five on a Friday.
Okay.
Um, nope.
That looks good, I'll just go to the next one, no, I'm kidding.
Okay, I'll actually make it bigger. Um, this update is specific to the corporate park, which started as TID four, uh, about sixteen years ago. And about two years ago, HSA entered into a contract with J, or whose name I don't even know. And the contract stated that if JHB Properties amended the land, that HSA would buy these two parcels and they would build two one hundred and fifty thousand or one three hundred thousand square foot building. As of last November, we had gone through the negotiations for the developers' agreement whereby the C properties and for, um, road and water and sewer and other public infrastructure grading and some other improvements to the property. The road then would come from the corner of Elm, which exists right now, and would come down to the southern property line and would all then down to the property line, because in Franklin, as in most communities, when you do any type of new infrastructure, public infrastructure improvements, they get deeded over to the city and a requirement is that you take it to the next point, the, the end of the parcel, so that the next person who buys land can structure. Which is why even though HSA didn't require this piece of the road, or this piece of the road, the city did. The project was somewhere between three point eight five and four million and, um, Scott Biller, who we were working with, um, ended up unable to hold the property completely, his sister and he were in disagreement. The contract's still out there, it, it runs with the land, so if he tries to sell this entire parcel, he, whoever buys it also buys that contract. Before all that happened, a CSM was created, this additional parcel and this additional parcel. This is a primary environmental corridor and will never be developed, along with this and along with this and the city, and along with this, which is actually, um, county property anyway, but it is primary environmental corridor. And the, uh, and the, uh, the folks at Sewer PAC said, we will allow you to get rid of some small areas of encroaching woodland or wetland, but we will not allow you to touch these primary environmental corridors, to which we agreed. But they would probably have jurisdiction anyway and it's not something the city would ever wanna do, uh, we do value, but they would probably have jurisdiction anyway and it's not something the city would ever wanna do, uh, we do value having those natural resources here in the city. So this parcel is available, potentially in the future, as a buildable parcel, as is this one. So that particular part of the parcel, as is this one. So that particular part of the project spurred what our city engineer called the, oh, what did he call that? Words are hard. Um, basically like the, the down and dirty, the, the simplest solution, spend the least. That meant that with the TID four, there was about six million in increment there. Water was brought from Oakwood all the way down to, I believe, here, to the property line, so that they could connect to it. It's purchased down here from MLG, who owns this parcel right here. And with that property purchase, a lift station was installed, a city-owned lift station, which will pump the wastewater back up to Oakwood Road where it connects to the sewer that exists there. There's also a gravity feed piece because everything kind of flows south and west. So there's gravity piping in the ground, too, so that when they develop this, for example, they will hook up to the the gravity sewer and it will flow by gravity down to the lift station and it will. So all of that utility is in place. That gave us. The the bare minimum plan is what he called it. So then we ran out of time to do any more expenditures out of TID four because there is a fight that's supposed to be finishing everything up, making sure you can pay all your debts, your municipal debts and all that stuff. So. At that time, the pandemic was just rearing its ugly head. We had no idea what was gonna happen to land values. We had no idea what was going to happen to potential new developments. We had. Were with a couple million extra in there. But it was a much more preferable decision at that time without a crystal ball than moving forward and taking on the redevelopment of Elm Road. And I'll come back to that in a minute. So the TID four expenditure window, which included all of the same area as TID four, with the exception of a little strip of residential that had been in the original TID that has since been taken out. So Ascension Hospital is still in there. That's helpful in case they do some additional investments on their campus. Like medical facilities and things of that nature. And we are now working on building increment in TID eight and as increment is accounted for, we will continue to invest in the public infrastructure to continue to build out this park. Since that time, the infrastructure to continue to build out this park. Since that time, the Elm Road interchange was completed. That's right here. You can literally see all the cars going by and they it gets even closer as you come down here and then right about South County Line and veers off this way again. So it comes from way over here and it goes. And it veers off this way again. So it comes from way over here and it goes. And then it goes this way again. So that's our big advantage here is that there's less than, less than a quarter mile, I would say, between this intersection of twenty seventh and Elm Road and getting on ninety four, either direction. Intersection of twenty seventh and Elm Road and getting on ninety four, either direction. Twenty seventh Street entrance and exit were closed at the same time, so this is the last entrance and exit in Milwaukee County before we get into Racine. So the county before you get into Racine. So the eventual plan for Elm Road is to broaden it and also with TID four dollars. Some purchases were made along here to allow for underground infrastructure, widen the road, curb and gutter, median lighting. There will eventually be a turn the road, curb and gutter, median lighting. There will eventually be a traffic signal here when there are enough businesses in here with truck traffic to warrant that. And in the meantime, we had Wongard come along, expressing an interest in this piece. Now, you can't really see it too much in. Right there, that's an A T C power line. And right in here somewhere, there's another one. And then if you keep going up. Follow that, follow that, follow that. It might be just off. I think it's right there. There's a tower there. So the city and now we have a signed developers' agreement with Wongard and the city has agreed that in the timeline that is suitable for them, we will relocate that A T C power line along the parcel boundaries here. So we'll reconnect, we'll still connect to the same place in the county, but we'll be coming down and around. That will allow them to build the the second building. But the first building will, they have a building permit already pulled. And that will be a two hundred and thirty five thousand square foot building right about here. They'll be demolishing this house. And they are anticipating that we will have Hickory Street from Oakwood Road down to Elm completed by the time they are ready to either lease or sell that property. So the city carrying financing, municipal financing, to pay for that improvement. And then we'll spend the rest of the life of the TID paying that back in annual installments that include interest. In order for us to agree to do the A T C power lines and to put in Hickory Street, we had to implement, which is how much new tax is going to be created by these buildings. And figuring out when they would be built, how big they were going to be, came up with a value and then that value is computed against the debt over time to make sure that the numbers work. As long as the picture is positive and you do the course of the lifetime of this mechanism, you're good. The developers' agreement puts into place the clause. So Wongard had to agree that they would guarantee if in any given year there was not enough increment to cover the annual debt payment. So that's the basic mechanism of how that works. So. And.
By the way, what was that number?
I have no idea. I don't have it memorized and I don't think it's public, so. It's tight. This is very, very tight. This park is being developed on the come. And by that, I mean, we're not going to know that we can pay for it with more new taxable investment.
I guess that was the reason for the question. It's like, okay, if it's, you know, a ginormous amount, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it is, but but there's there's a lot of numbers involved there. So. This parcel was just CSM and split off roughly this piece. And I'm just being real rough here. And then this piece as two separate pieces, this is a permanent conservancy. HSA is gonna do a spec building here and I think it's two hundred and sixty five thousand square feet. And Saputo is going here and theirs is like three hundred and forty five and theirs is like three hundred and forty five thousand square feet. Those improvements are going to help anchor the redevelopment of Elm Road. But because those taxable investments won't even hit the TID until twenty twenty three at the earliest, that is what predicates when we can develop Elm Road earliest. That is what predicates when we can develop Elm Road. We have to make sure that we have the increment in the bank before we can make the first loan payment. So that's how that goes and and it's a little more complicated than that, but in general, that's how that works. So. The than that, but in general, that's how that works. So the property that started this whole thing, we're hopeful that the the owner can work out the control issues and move forward and if not, could potentially sell. HSA continues to hold on because they want to develop these parcels, developing this one. The businesses that are along Elm Road in either direction, the city has no plan to do anything about them. We believe that as the value of the whole park in general improves and the attractiveness improves by those properties. Or the businesses that are there will choose to make improvements to match their neighbors. Or they might choose to locate to another place, in which case I would be happy to relocate them somewhere else in the city where the 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 taxes they pay is more aligned with their business model. In the meantime, this FedEx building is for sale. It would cost somewhere between six hundred thousand and one and a quarter million to get rid of all of the concrete and the footings because whoever buys it cannot put in a truck terminal. All of the concrete and the footings because whoever buys it cannot put in a truck terminal. It is against the zoning code for that area.
So then why would somebody want to buy that?
They would be able to buy it to put something else in it. They wanted to have a large monument sign if they needed access to I ninety four. Able to buy it to put something else in it. They wanted to have a large monument sign if they needed access to I ninety four. This is very, very hot land. All of this is very, very hot land. But that's not gonna go until all the other easy land is gone. That's not easy land. And FedEx hasn't had it on the market long enough for them to bring the price down. But the longer it sits out on the market, the lower the price will go. So until developers don't have any other options and until FedEx decides that they are not gonna sell it at the price that they have it set at, it's gonna sit.
And it's not operational right now.
No, they abandoned it more than, well, well, more than a year ago, probably two now.
But paying taxes.
Yes.
That's important.
Until things start to happen here, the taxes are like next to nothing. And that's gonna change. And that may be one of the reasons they decide to lower their price, too, so. Then we get down here and these three parcels are all owned by the same two partners under an L L C called Fox Glen through Cushman Wakefield Berkey. And they have filled this pond. They've done some grading. This piece on the south side is approximately five acres and the Root River goes through it. You will never be able to develop it. I long term, I'd love to see that become a pocket park of some sort for the employees as an amenity in the park. And potentially a canoe law added to that as well. So those are actively being marketed and there's any number of developers who have kicked the tires on that. There's always something in play. At this point, there's something committed and finalized. And then there's this parcel down here, which is part of the one hundred and ten eighty one project along here or even two. This could be, a CSM could redivide these parcels and this could be another project here. If something comes here or if something comes here or when something comes here, it will become more important while Hickory Street will while Hickory Street will be completed to here if something comes in here. But if this breaks loose first, this is MLG's property and they have a plan for land development, but they're not gonna do construction. So if they end up finding somebody, an anchor tenant or somebody who wants to buy or some if they end up finding somebody, an anchor tenant or somebody who wants to buy or somebody wants to buy the land buy the land to actually build something, we need to figure out how to get all the public infrastructure there. So hopefully this happens first because then this piece will already be done. And then the sewer and the water and the road will hopefully this happens first because then this piece will already be done. And then the sewer and the water and the road will all continue. And it will eventually come all the way down to South County Line Road, which will make this an even more attractive park because then you have three points of access here, here and here. Goal would be truck traffic predominantly comes here, truck traffic never goes west here. And we don't want truck traffic on South County Line at all because our neighbors to the south have been very, very good to Franklin and they maintain that road. And we do not want to trash it with trucks. Plus, it's a residential street on the other side in Racine County. So that's a pretty overview of what's happening here. And there it it's a changing story every day. And there will be more to come, but that's your, you're now up to date to the minute.
Thank you.
And right now, none of that area is residential.
Any, any of that?
In that area?
No.
Okay.
Nope. We do not want.
Areas.
Just the top of the Wongard.
You you couldn't, you couldn't put residential there. There is no development allowed there.
There is.
Trees will not be touched, water will not be moved.
What's at the top of the Wongard piece? There's a house. Is that, what is that?
Wongard.
Property, a farm or a.
This one?
A business?
What, this one?
Right there.
That that's, that's the Wongard property. That would be demolished. The northern building is gonna go there. Yeah, nobody's living in there. It's a vacated building. I think the water shut off and everything.
Oh, really?
This is part of the P D D. This is part of the planned district development.
And diagrams?
Wetlands. Oh, actually, you know, if you.
What does that mean?
Um, it means water is there.
Oh, I see.
It's a wetland. Um, yeah, the landated wetlands.
Got it. Thank you.
So for the most part, um, you need to get special permitting from D N R if you wanna, so. The cell let them mitigate as much of the wetland as they wanted to. So they abandoned that and are gonna build smaller with the possibility that maybe there would be a third building down the road, depending on how building one and building two go. So. That's a scoop on that.
What's going on? Yeah, I appreciate it. Very good.
Uh, that's only one of them. Then there's also TID six, which would be for another day. And then there's all of the other miscellaneous that comes in the door and half the stuff I can't talk about anyway and so. But yes, yes, I'm very, 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 very busy.
All right, let's talk about next meeting, twenty seventh. I recommend we punt on that one.
I I'm available, but I think it's gonna be a tough time, you know, right after Christmas. I I doubt we have quorum.
You're right, I do too.
But I I do think I'd be available.
And you wouldn't, I don't know that you would have anybody in place by then and if you did, whether they'd be able to attend. Would have anybody in place by then and if you did, whether they'd be able to attend.
Oh, for a new member?
Yes. Okay, so I have a motion to.
Suspend the December twenty seventh.
Do we have another date? Let's choose the next date right away and get it on calendars.
In January.
Okay, so.
It's normal.
At the end of calendars.
In January.
Okay, so.
It's normal.
At the end of January?
Right, our normal date.
Okay, just so eliminate that December meeting altogether.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we don't have anything to sign off on, do we? Did you know? Well, then, yeah, so.
Yeah, we're more or less doing what the other commissioners doing.
Well, for the most part, a lot of them do.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Who made that motion?
Barbara did.
Oh.
No, you wanna do it?
I thought Alderman Barber had actually made that or no? Did you not?
No. The sounds were coming from the left, right? I wasn't quite sure. Do I have a second?
I'm, I so moved.
All right, done.
All right.
That's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn? But before I do that, Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody.
Happy New Year's.
Enjoying working with you guys and look forward to two thousand and twenty two. Now, we can have a motion, go ahead.
So move to adjourn.
I second.